All right, let me start the recording. Hold on one second. Okay, let's see if TJ comes tonight.
I'll do this to us.
You want to put money on it?
I don't see him, yeah.
Nice friendly wager. Okay, I think we're just waiting for, I have one person still connecting to audio. Two people still connecting to audio.
Anybody who's, anybody who's going to speak, would like to see live, not pictures or mic'd out?
Yeah, anyone who's providing testimony is going to have to appear via video because you have to be sworn in.
Yeah, we're all here in, in one location. Sorry, I was muted. Should we stay on mute?
At the moment, at the moment, yeah.
Very good.
Hey, Mr. Chair, if you want to get started, yeah?
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, just for all.
This special meeting of the Bradley Beach zoning board of adjustments now called to order. At this time, I would ask that everyone keep themselves muted until asked to speak and please silence all cell phones and other paging devices in the background as they are distracting others. The 48-hour notice is required under the Open Public Meetings Act has been met as notice of this meeting was emailed on November 27th, 2020, published in the Asbury Park Press, The Co-Star and The CoStar. Copy has been placed on the bulletin board in the borough office and the copy has been filed with the borough clerk. Mr. Ifusso?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Quinlan? I talk about my own phone, right?
You got a mayor? Mr. Quinlan.
You're muted, Bob.
We were just talking to you. Oh, there you go. You're here, okay. Mr. Mayor? He's not with us this evening, or this afternoon, I should say. Ms. Rosenberg? No. Mr. Cretelli?
Present.
Ms. Bournell? And Chair Rosenberg?
Here.
Here.
And also present with us is Mark Hittrik, attorney to the board, and Christine Bell is here on behalf of the engineer and planners office. Gerald Frieda will not be with us this afternoon.
I'm here also.
Who's, who's also? Did I miss you, Mr. Wade?
Yeah, she did.
I did. I'm sorry. Mr. Wade?
How could you forget?
I, I don't know. I had a check mark next to your name. I must've just saw you and checked you off. I don't know. Okay.
Ray, you must've done something.
I know. Or sign up and get in the pink slip, I guess.
One more now. Anybody who's going to make any testimony, you must show yourself live. You, you have to be on video.
Okay, we don't, we don't have any other correspondence or business. This is a special meeting. So the only application under consideration is actually a request. It's ZB 20/19, Joseph and Jane Miller, block 71, lot 16, 600 Evergreen Avenue. The applicant requested an amendment to resolution 41-1-14-07. Said resolution required the applicant to deed restrict the property to state that the second floor kitchen is to be removed when the parents of the applicant no longer reside at the premises. The applicant has indicated that they have removed said kitchen and in order to move forward with the sale of their home, they need to file a new deed removing said restriction, which requires an amended resolution from this board.
Mr. Miller? Mr. Miller, or Mr.? Mr. Kitchen? Mr. Kitchen?
Yeah, I'm just waiting for that.
Mr. Miller, can you just unmute? There you go.
So, Mr. Miller, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Who will be testifying in addition to yourself?
I have Teresa Lee here, my real estate broker, and my wife is standing right behind me, Jane.
Okay.
That's it.
So I'm going to ask all three of you, and if Teresa can get in the photo also.
Hello, I'm here.
Raise your right hand, please, along with Ms. Bell. Do you swear from the tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth tonight's proceeding, today's proceeding?
I do.
I do.
Okay. So, I'll just start it off, just for the board's edification, and so the, the Millers are asked for a special meeting today because they have sold their home on, at 600 Evergreen. And there's a closing coming up, and my understanding is the closing December 8th. Back a number of years ago, in 2007, there was an application before the board for this property. And they were permitted to have a second-story kitchen. And as part of that resolution that was adopted by this board, they were required to file a deed restriction stating relating to that second-story kitchen, and that it is to be removed when the parents of the applicant were no longer living there. I just want to make sure I'm stating, yeah, no longer resides at the premises. So my understanding is that the Millers' parents don't live there anymore. They're selling the property. And they're here today. And I think they can make the argument themselves, but I think the argument is going to be that that kitchen has been removed and they're asking that that deed restriction, that they'd be permitted to remove that deed restriction in order to proceed with their closing. Did I get that right, Mr. Miller?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I'll turn it over to you.
Do you want to just explain to the board what took place and what changes have been made, or what?
Oh, yeah. Okay. Yeah, so, you know, my, my father passed away a while ago, and my mother just recently left the home, maybe two or three weeks ago. And so we came in and took out the stove from the kitchen and replaced it with a permanent cabinet and permanent piece of countertop. You know, to make it into, you know, like kind of a wet bar in lieu of a kitchen.
Do you call, just taking the stove out, putting a, it's not a permanent cabinet, it's there? Still have all the kitchens such as microwave, sink and refrigerator, removing, removing a kitchen? That's a question that I don't understand. Moving a kitchen would be taking sink out, taking the microwave out, taking the cabinets out, refrigerator out? So, to me, that's still, still a kitchen without a stove. It's a European kitchen.
Wait, wait, Jane. So, so when you do remove a stove from a kitchen, according to a lot of information that we have, it is no longer a kitchen. Yeah, it's considered a wet bar.
But you, you just made that you put a permanent cabinet in, a countertop. That's not permanent.
I'm sorry?
That doesn't look permanent. To me, that means they could take that cabinet out, put a stove back in, and we have another kitchen.
Look at the updated photo.
You might be looking at a, no, you're looking at the older photo, I would imagine.
I'm looking at one with a white cabinet spot.
No.
No, that's, yeah, that's old. Yeah, there was an updated photo provided.
Yes, it's on the website. Let me pull it up for you.
We apologize for that, but, yeah, we updated it for a permanent solution.
Okay, give me one second. Mr. Miller, are these the photos you're speaking of? This was?
Yeah, just. There it is.
There's the after.
But it's still, we got microwave.
A microwave is not considered the fine kitchen. Do you want me to testify?
Yeah, I'm going to let Teresa speak for a second here. I'll just move out of the way.
Hello, all. This is Teresa Lee. I'm a Realtor for Coldwell Banker. And I wanted to come on here because I'm happy to summarize what the definition of the real estate term kitchen means in real estate versus a wet bar. A kitchen is defined as a designated space inside a home that's used for the preparation and cooking of food. It may or may not contain one or more in combination of the following amenities of running water, refrigerator, dishwasher, microwave, cabinets, countertops. However, it must include the ability to cook food from some roughened power source such as gas line or 240-volt electricity. Cooking appliances such as a stove, a range, an oven, a convection oven, a wall oven, indoor grills, that constitutes what a kitchen would be. And I have some good examples to stress my point. I'm sure many of you may be aware with the historical Essex and Sussex in Ocean Avenue and Spring Lake. They feature hotels, hotel-style condominiums that, that feature wet bars. They have no kitchens. The space lacks a stove and oven, but they feature wet bars with counters, sinks, cabinets, microwaves. And another example I wanted to cite has to do with mortgage lenders. When you're in my business, mortgage lenders require that all homes contain a kitchen. And all kitchens must have a stove or an oven installed in that kitchen. And without it, the property is considered kitchenless, and a mortgage would be denied. A wet bar, those are amenity, that's a feature, an accessory found in many homes in our area, typically found in butler pantries, finished basements, libraries, and in many single-family dwellings that feature mother-daughter arrangements. Such now is the case of 600 Evergreen, which I would consider today as being a single-family dwelling with one kitchen on the first floor and a wet bar on the second floor ever since that stove was physically removed.
It's kind of big for a wet bar, in my opinion. That's my opinion.
Can you, can you point this to the law or the statute or the municipal ordinance that, that described? You obviously read from something. Can you?
Well, that was my statement. I just read it, so I didn't forget anything, but I wrote that statement.
Oh, so it's your statement of what a kitchen?
It's my statement as a Realtor for Coldwell Banker, yes.
But there's no statutory provision of what is and isn't a kitchen?
I, I've never seen one in, in my career. I, I don't know if one exists. I just have to go by what I see day-to-day in my world. I tried to cite some examples to prove that, you know, like if you talk to a, a home appraiser or a mortgage lender, in fact, I have to tell you, I even spoke to, this was weeks ago, I had called, and I believe his name is Mr. Nelson from the code enforcement department, and I asked him what he defines a kitchen as, and he would, he clearly said to me on the phone, Teresa, a, a kitchen has to have a stove. If it isn't, it's a wet bar. And a wet bar could be elaborate. It could have cabinetry, it could have countertops, sink. I, I come across those situations often. Now, this is a very large home at 600 Evergreen. It's over 5,000 square feet. So this kitchen may seem elaborate to you, but it's really a second floor. It's a little space that, you know, Mom, Joe Miller and Jane Miller's mom used to use when she was living here.
The stove is removed, what about the gas line?
There is no gas.
There was never a gas line.
It was, it was an electric.
Electric, okay.
Yes, sir.
Hi, can I ask a question?
Yeah, go.
Um, what was the room initially before this was retrofitted for the parents?
It was, it was a whole addition that we did. We had to come to the town with plans showing the added kitchen and added second floor and added third floor to the house. Originally, the house is about 1,700 square feet. And we added probably 2,785 square feet to it. We basically tore the top off the house and went up with two floors.
So originally, it was, it didn't exist?
Correct.
Put that facility in as a kitchen, stating to the town that it would be removed when something happened to the parents? And now the only thing you want to take out of that is the stove?
Yes.
Hey, I'm, I'm having a little difficulty with that.
Me too.
I, I have a question, if you don't mind. Have, have you ever been in a home where you've seen a wet bar?
I have.
What's a wet bar? What's, what's a, like, if you go into a finished basement and you see a bunch of countertops, cabinets, a microwave?
Here's the issue. Here's the issue that I have. It, a wet bar is constructed as a wet bar. Here you have something constructed as a kitchen. You removed a single element and are saying it's no longer a kitchen, and you can't give me a statutory site. And I know I'm being difficult here, but you have a, you have an ordinance, a, a, a situation that runs with the land. And I'd love to have something that we could hang our hat on to say, okay, based upon this words on paper, we can do this. But it's just, in, in my opinion, and I, I think the chair says, is feeling the same way, it just doesn't feel right. If you can, I, I would feel better if you could give me something other than a Realtor's opinion.
I think it sounds like it's a question of semantics, and we're calling a painted horse a zebra. Not, I'm, I'm kind of feeling the same thing.
I've, I've seen wet bars in my day, a lot of them, but I haven't seen them, a whole room, all three walls of a room as a wet bar. I've seen a little.
Oh, I have.
Well, you, you're in a real estate.
Well, that's why I'm here to testify. I, I have to tell you, in the case of, if you are familiar with a bi-level home, bi-level homes are all over Monmouth County. And I can't tell you how many times I walk into a home where the lower level of the space is transformed into a in-law suite, quote, in-law suite is, we could be considered, you know, some, a, a separate living quarters for an in-law, a single-family dwelling, mind you. And it will have an elaborate kitchen set up with no stove. I, I can't even begin to tell you how many cases I could cite, which, by the way, I have to tell you, I've done it twice recently where I had sold two bi-level homes in 2020. I can even name you the addresses where the mother-daughter style home.
That doesn't answer the case.
We had to remove a stove to, to get the code enforcement to deliver.
If that doesn't answer the question of what we see in, what we see in these pictures, even the finished picture, which is the cabinet, still looks like a kitchen. European kitchen, then they put a, a hot plate top on the bottom, and we got another kitchen back.
That's not a kitchen.
So. Mr. Chairman?
It's not a kitchen.
Mr. Chairman, Chris, Christine is here. I don't know if.
Yeah, we need her help now.
Yeah.
Go, Christine, help us out. You got on mute.
You're muted.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
So typically, I would agree, a kitchen requires a way to cook the food, either an oven or a stove. Just having a microwave does not make a room a kitchen. I think what the board is having an, an issue with in this instance is the size of the wet bar and the fact that it, with the full-size refrigerator and everything else, really still looks like a kitchen. But there is no stove or oven there. I don't know. Is that helpful?
Is there, is, is there anything in the, in our ordinances that address this?
There is nothing in our ordinance. There's really nothing except, you know, the definition of a kitchen is a place where cook, where food is prepared and cooked.
Um, I have a question. I don't, I don't have the paperwork right in front of me, but I'd like to know exactly what the wording was initially in regards to having this removed when the parents were no longer living there. And whether it said, oh, we're going to just take out the stove, and then we're going to be good. I mean, if it.
I can read.
Wasn't, it was all supposed to be removed or taken out, then I don't understand why we're discussing it.
All right, so I can read it to you. I have the resolution from 2007. So now, I'll read it in its entirety so you get a flavor for it, that the, now therefore be resolved by the Borough of Bradley Beach zoning board of adjustment that the bulk variance requested is hereby granted, subject to the following. So these are the conditions. Applicant agrees that the subject matter of the within approval shall commence within two years of the date of memorialization hereof, less otherwise extended. Applicant further agrees that the application will be amended to request a one-story rebuilt garage on footprint height, and that structure to be, structure to be approved by the board engineer. The spot can remain, and a deed restriction that states the second-story kitchen is to be removed when the parents of the applicant no longer reside at the premises and for replacement of curb and sidewalk as per report of the borough engineer. So I'll, I'll just repeat, you know, the, the language dealing with this issue. A deed restriction that states the second-story kitchen is to be removed when the parents of the applicant no longer reside at the premises.
So you just changed the room from kitchen to wet bar, but not taking the kitchen out? Reading, I'm reading in front. It says the whole kitchen should be removed if I'm reading.
What does it say now?
It just says the kitchen.
It must have a stove, so it's not a kitchen anymore. It's not a kitchen.
Our argument, where we remove the stove, it's not a kitchen.
Christine?
I'm just to give you a little bit more information on the definition of a kitchen. I just searched, the Census Bureau does keep track of the amount of housing units without complete plumbing and without complete kitchen facilities. So I looked up what their definition is. Um, and the Census Bureau considers housing units having each of the three facilities, a sink with a faucet, a stove or a range, and a refrigerator to have complete kitchen facilities. So it's not considered a complete kitchen unless it has all three of those.
Could you repeat those again?
It is a sink with a faucet, a stove or a range, and a refrigerator.
To me, that's a complete kitchen, correct?
Correct, that's a complete kitchen.
And done here, it doesn't say complete or not complete. So that's also subject to interpretation, correct?
Yeah, I mean, it, it says the second-story kitchen is to be removed. I think the applicant's argument is, I take this out, it's not a kitchen anymore, therefore it's removed. The, you know, a strict interpretation, I'm just discussing thoughts, a strict interpretation would be a removal of the kitchen means removal of the kitchen, that, that space gets removed. So that begs the question, though, you know, what would they have had, if, if, it begs the question, so if they remove the stove, what else would they have needed? We know they removed the stove, what else would they have needed to do?
It's a lot of cabinets, but you can't, cabinets are cabinets.
Right.
Hey, Christine? That definition that you gave, is that, is that a regulation, or is that just published by the Census Department?
No, the Census Department, you know, you can look up for any municipality, for the country, any census-designated area, how many living units have complete plumbing and complete kitchens? And that's how they define a complete kitchen for purposes of their record-keeping.
But that's not a, that's not a regu, that's a regulation, not a a law, right?
Correct, that's not a law. That's just how the Census Department defines complete kitchen. But I think the issue we're having is that there really is no legal definition of what a complete kitchen is.
Yeah, but we try it this way.
Before, was it a sink with a faucet and a, and a range and a refrigerator? Did they remove the refrigerator? No, it's still in the picture. Okay, because I only saw a corner. I can only see a picture. Mike?
Can we look at it this way? When, when the, when you acquired the deed restriction, you were doing construction to this house?
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
And you were adding what to this house?
A kitchen so my mother could cook.
So this kitchen that was here was not there?
That's correct, yes.
And with, so before the question rose, this thing that we're calling a kitchen was not there.
Correct.
So the deed restriction, the idea of the deed restriction was that this thing that you're placing here would be removed when the, when the, the time came. Because the definition of the ki, I, I'm having trouble, if the kitchen is defined as what you see in picture one going in to get the deed restriction, use the same definition coming out. You know what I'm saying? I, I'm just trying to, all I'm looking to do is have some logical basis to come up with, with, with what my opinion is. And I, I just, if there was, if there was a, did, did the, did the construction code official that you spoke to, did he send you an email that, that gave you something? Do you have something other than, because, you know, let's be honest, the, the, your interest is to sell the house. Your Realtor's interest is to sell the house, too. I, I'm looking for something that's, that's more objective to, to base an opinion that says that this is now no longer a kitchen. And I'm, I'm struggling.
Okay.
I think a lot of people are struggling with this.
Yeah, so, so that's why we looked up the definition of a kitchen, and that's what we came up with, and that is our argument. So, I mean, I understand you're struggling with it, but we, we pose a good argument here, and I think demolishing the whole kitchen seems a little excessive. You know, it's just cabinets. People have cabinets in their house, and again, I'll, I'll just bring up the wet bar. People have wet bars in their house, and whether they be small or large, they do exist. And I don't see any town ordinance or regulation that doesn't permit me to have a wet bar in the house.
But you did sign an agreement about removing the kitchen.
I did.
Mr. David, you're on mute.
From what I'm listening to, the, the main thing that makes a kitchen a kitchen is a stove and an oven.
That's correct.
Is there a middle road here to have an agreement between the town and the owner that a oven and stove will not be placed in this room in the future to make sure that it doesn't become a quote-unquote kitchen, a cooking facility?
That would have to be another deed restriction on the owner.
Yeah, code enforcement handles.
Can I say something also? Normally, wet bars are adjacent to.
Mr. Stevens, please mute.
You know, wet bars aren't just suspended on the second floor of a house and suddenly called a wet bar for convenience sake. Patio, or if you have it next to your family room. But I feel like this is, like, basically a bedroom that we're. like basically a bedroom that we're calling a wet bar just because we don't want to take the cabinets out. I mean,
I would disagree with that. Um, you know, uh, you said typically wet bars are here or there. Uh, this is the second floor. There's four floors in this house. Um, they, they become smaller floors as you go up and, and the convenience is there to keep some stuff up there, you know, your alcohol or maybe some extra food in the refrigerator and be able to wash some dishes there. I mean, there, there's a convenience to it because you're constantly going up and downstairs in this home. And there is a living room right next to that wet bar area, kitchen area and a dining room as well.
What, what Mr. Cattelli said, is that, is that not a reasonable solution? I, I, I think that's, that kind of assuages my concern, or at least finds a middle ground.
May, may I address the board, please? My name is Bob Hines. I'm the purchaser of the home or the person. I, I'm the person who's under contract to purchase the home.
So state your name and your address, Mr. Hines.
Robert Hines, twenty-seven Dogwood Lane, Montvale, New Jersey.
You swear a firm, raise your right hand, please. Do you swear a firm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So I, I, I've been listening intently as, as this, as this meeting has been going on and I, I will tell you that um, you know, it has been our clear uh, position with um, the Millers as we've gone through this contr-, uh, we've gone through this process. That it was our desire to make sure that um, the, the home that we're purchasing from them is compliant with any restrictions so, uh, that were laid out by the town of Bradley Beach when um, the construction was done and that the deed needed to be cleaned. Uh, and as I'm listening to this conversation, um, solutions such as, you know, making um, you know, making assurances that an oven will not be reinstalled to the pro-, to the property. I, you know, that's something that changes the dynamic of what I purchased. Um, I purchased a house with two kitchens and I was you know, led to believe that it was compliant. Um, so I, I just, you know, our desire is obviously to purchase the home. Um, but that this board lays out very clear uh, definition of what defines a kitchen and what will allow this um, deed restriction to be removed, you know, in compliance with the ordinances of, of the town.
Well, so first of all, um, it's a very unusual um, situation for the board. Very unusual. Um, in fact, you know, we did a special meeting during the day to accommodate this potential closing. Very unusual. In advance of this, um, we were pr- provided by I, I, I'm gathering it's your title company, a, a document that would be signed by the, the chairman of the board and uh, notarized by our board secretary saying that the that the deed restriction may be removed. So I don't know if that so that, 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 that was what the request was, that that, so if the board grants the relief, then the document provided by your title company would be signed and, you know, I'm not giving you any legal advice, but I, I gather it's so that, that deed is clean as the way you, you put it. So if the board were to do anything else other than that, um, and I know everybody's struggling with this for good reason. But imposing further restrictions, then, you know, I, I don't, I don't know what, you know, I would think that that would impact the deed.
One, one comment, I, I just want to make actually two points. Uh, number one, um, when I sign a listing, I, I don't review deeds. Uh, it's, it's not in my practice to do that. Came up after the fact. Uh, secondly, uh, the title company did indeed provide a release uh, for that deed restriction to be released. It is in uh, the packet that was, the application that was
That's what I just referred, that's what I was talking about.
Yeah. Oh, I didn't know if you guys didn't have a copy or not.
We have, we have everything.
Oh, okay.
That's what I was talking about.
But that's if the board agrees to sign it.
Yeah.
Mark, Mike?
Mister, Mister Hines, um, you, you just testified and correct me if I'm wrong, that what you thought you were buying was a house with two k- kitchens, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So if you thought you're buying a house with two kitchens, the intent is that this thing is gonna be a kitchen. Right? I mean, it, it like, I, I'm struggling because everybody wants to have it the way that they want. But the logic of this is, is kind of flawed. Right? So if you think you're buying two kitchens, which I, I'm not questioning your, your honesty, but you're being given a house that all, that, that the seller is hoping only has one kitchen, but you're getting a clean deed, what are you buying? Because then clearly your intent is to have the thing as a kitchen. Like I, I, I feel like the logic is certain.
I, I, I don't know if I, I don't know if I can, I mean, again, I bought the house under the pretenses that there were two kitchens in the house and discovered after the fact, after I went to contract that, in fact, there needed not to be one of the kitchens in order for it to be um, to be compliant with the town ordinances, so.
So what would make you happy is to purchase, is to purchase the house without a deed restriction and any ability to do what you want with this thing and make it a kitchen, because you want two kitchens?
Okay, this is, not necessarily. I, 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 I'm not, I, I can't say yes or no to that right now. I, I'm really still at a point where I'm processing what has gone down over, you know, the events that have transpired since the deed restriction was discovered a month ago.
I, I get it. And, and, and I, I understand that this is frustrating for everybody involved.
If I, if I may, if I may, Mr. Hines, you're under oath.
Yes, sir.
If you close on this property, is it your intention to put that stove back in?
It is not, well, it's not my immediate intention to do so, but it is also what I'm buying now is not what I thought I was.
Not a good answer.
That's that. I'll ask my, I'll ask my question again. If you close on this property, is it your intention to put that stove back in?
Uh, I'll answer no.
Okay, so he's, he's on the record for saying no. Now, we all know uh, with the board that we, we are not an enforcement agency, right? Mr. Fuso, we've had this conversation, right? So we're not an enforcement agency, so um, you, the board can make, make this action and without us ever knowing about it and the person could get caught doing it by code enforcement, whatever, but if that stove was put in, you know, we wouldn't know about it. All I can tell you is I, you know, we have, we have, so that's a fact. The other fact is that under oath, the potential buyer made that representation and all I'm saying is those are things you have to wait.
I'd ask Mr. Hines another question. Are you, are you gonna ever make this a kitchen? He has no answer.
I, I don't know the answer to that right now. I, 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 again, I, I, I kind of feel like, well, I, I shouldn't, you know, um, seems like I'm, I'm getting questions now when the, the real, the real issue to me is is it a kitchen or is it not a kitchen in the board's opinion? And if so, if it is, what are the steps that need to be taken to have it removed so that I can buy a home that has got a clean deed to it?
To Hines, I, I appreciate your, your, the, the box that you're in, believe me.
I'm in a, I am absolutely.
And that's why I'm not trying to be difficult. But you went into this, you offered some money for a house that you thought had two kitchens and now this thing is discovered. So, you know, it I'm, I'm sorry. I, I, I you know, it, it's difficult. You're, you're under oath and we're squeezing you and, and I get. I, I, I mean, I, I thought Mr. Cattelli's idea was a good one, but I, I do understand the idea that you want a clean, clean title.
Dave?
If I recall correctly, Mr. Hines said he doesn't plan on making this a kitchen. And the concern of some of the people on the board is that, well, it could be done behind closed doors. But if I'm not mistaken, on a, a basis, the county comes into the properties for tax purposes and looks properties over for reassessments. Could something be done along those lines to, to give comfort to the people that have concerns that if Mr. Hines did make it a kitchen and then an appraiser came in and saw a kitchen, then he's up the creek without a paddle.
Yeah, but when I asked Mr. Hines, if he's thinking of making this a kitchen, yes or no answer, he couldn't give an answer.
I thought he gave an answer, no.
That was for stove.
Oh, for the stove.
For a kitchen, he didn't give an answer.
Sorry, Mr. Rose.
But, but isn't the definition, it's only a kitchen if it has a stove and an oven? That, that's the way I'm, I'm, I'm hearing, and maybe I'm hearing things in- incorrectly. But I thought that the, the, the key was it had to have a stove and oven for cooking to be considered quote unquote a kitchen. The, the stove has been pulled out. If he says under oath, he's not gonna put a stove in, in theory, maybe something could be done by clearing that deed. If he does go behind the town's back and put a stove in, at some point in time, he's gonna get caught. Because they're, they're, they come through on a, on a, I, I, I won't say a regular basis. But uh, we, we had our house after Sandy, we had the, the county come through twice. That the county come through right after the house was rebuilt. And then there was a reassessment in, in the county and, and appraiser came back through the house again. So um, you know, at some point, if he says he's not gonna do it and he does it, at some point, there's gonna be somebody going through a house that's gonna be able to determine that something's been changed. That's only my opinion.
I, I have two things to say. First, if it walks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's pretty much a duck. And I think if anybody was shown a picture of that second room, they would still call it a kitchen. They would not be looking for the stove. And if we don't successfully do this deed restriction in such a manner, the next person who buys the house, it's gonna, it's gonna come right back to us again, because it wasn't done right to start with. Um, I think if it wasn't there before, it was put in as a, a deed restriction as is, then it needs to be removed completely. Not just a little tad to make it appear like it's not a kitchen anymore.
Mike?
Just, I, I can't, I, I'm just going back to the intent of the two parties. The intent of Mr. Miller was to pull permits to add a kitchen where there was none. So he added these elements, called it a kitchen, and now is subtracting a single element and calling it not a kitchen. Mr. Hines has purchased the house and I, and I'm sure is, is paying a pretty penny in Bradley Beach these days with the intent to buy a house with two kitchens. That was the purchase, that was your stated intent, was a house with two kitchens. And I, I just can't swear this circle.
Mike, you put it in proper English. I think the situation between Mr. Miller, Mr. Hines, not the board.
Was, was this a room that was part of the new addition or was this a room that was part of the old house that was converted to a kitchen?
No, this was part of the new addition. And part of the plan was a kitchen and a plant, correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Wade?
And there's a dining room and a living room right next to us.
That's correct.
So that's what makes it a kitchen?
Yeah. It's a suite.
How big is that room, Mr. Miller?
Uh, which, which one, the kitchen?
The one you, whatever you call it.
That would be about ten by ten?
That looks bigger than ten by ten.
No, the pictures are expanded with using one of those lenses, uh, if you're looking at the older pictures.
Where are we, guys?
Um, Mr. Cattelli, I just, just made a phone call to the assessor and they would not assess that as a kitchen because it does not have a stove. So you're correct. When they do the inspections for tax purposes and for value and they report that number, the assessed value back to the county for tax purposes. Um, if they did an inspection, if it doesn't have a stove, they don't classify it as a kitchen.
But if they did do a, an, an inspection and they had a stove, then there would be an issue.
Then it would be reported back as two kitchens and possibly multifamily, which is what we're
That's definitely what we're looking at.
But that would force the, the new owner to remove it under under town ordinance. He would be in violation of
They assess what they see. They're, they're also not an enforcement agency. They assess what they see. They're just trying to generate revenue for the borough, so I don't know, mostly the assessor, whoever does the inspections follows up with code enforcement and the building department to compare permits and this, that and the other thing on every home they go into.
So Dave, I, I think what would happen in that situation, his taxes go up. The question about
Oh, yeah.
The question is whether the left hand is speaking to the right hand.
Right.
To Mr. Miller and Mr. Hines, I think, right now.
Well, alright.
And there's, there's really no guarantee. I mean, did anybody go to the, the Miller's house to make sure that the parents were still there, that they were still allowed to have the kitchen? Who does that?
There was no enforcement for that, whatever, since
It was in the resolution. It said when the parents weren't there, they had to remove the kitchen. We never followed up on that since two thousand and eight.
Right. So that's what's gonna happen in the future. There'll be no follow-up, so. And Mr. Hines said he don't know if he'd make it a kitchen or not, so.
Well, in fairness to Mr. Hines, he said he would not.
Said no to a stove. He didn't say no to a kitchen.
Well, once again, you know, it depends on how you define it. I mean, th- th- there's no ordinance on this. I mean, so the couple of depp- definitions that have come up during the course of the meeting, Christine came up with one from the Census uh, Bureau is that, you know, it, it, it has three things in it, one, one of which is a, a stove. So this doesn't have that. So you're gonna have to you, you're gonna have to make that determination whether that's satisfactory.
Would or would the town be able to send an inspector into the house on every couple of years or whatever timeframe was, you know?
It's never gonna happen.
They don't have the resources to do that.
Okay, it's just, just a thought, just a question.
Yeah, I know, that's, and that's what we always struggle with, Dave, because once we make a decision, we have no control, right, over?
We're done. It's up, it's up to the compliance department.
I hate to get involved in design, but I will anyway. Is there anything that can be done here that can bring the girth of this thing down to make it more like a wet bar?
Wet bar looking.
Did it? It's a wet bar.
Um, wh- what would be your suggestion?
I, I, I honestly, without like actually seeing it with my feet on the ground, that I'm not asking to come into your house. I, I, I don't know. Um, I don't know if removing the upper cabinets would do it. I mean, that, that might go a long way. Um, you know, I, I, you hear where we're going with this and you hear what our struggle is.
And count, maybe counters, counter space six feet, not And count maybe counters counter space six feet, not twen- eighteen.
You know, but no, I'm not going to go there because I I don't think you guys have a ruling on what size a wet bar can be in a house. So I'm not going to.
Alright, then I'm going to vote no.
Six feet.
Yeah.
It's going to be easy to say no right now, sir. You need four votes.
Design projects either.
And we don't design. We don't want either party to be unhappy, but there's got to be some compliance between the two and cooperation.
I would be willing to remove the upper cabinets if that would satisfy the board. Would that do it?
I don't know. Just take any consideration.
Okay.
What about removing the refrigerator?
Sorry?
What about removing the refrigerator?
I have no issue in removing the refrigerator.
We also just put Mr. Hines in a in a bucket here. Because we don't know what his plans are for that room in that house.
If if I may, I appreciate the board offering solutions. We would like to go on the record to say that, you know, as these solutions begin ripping more and more of the room out of it, it becomes bigger of of a bigger hole um in the house and that. So, you know. I understand the compromise that's trying to be made here, but it also puts me in a situation where what I'm purchasing is further from what I thought it was purchasing.
Mr. Hines, are you planning to live here or summer home, winter home?
Yes, sir. I'm going to be full time. As a matter of fact, on Monday, I'm homeless. So I'm hoping that we can come to some resolution here.
Don't want to be homeless.
Um, Mr. Hines, I I feel badly, but but I feel like you were sort of not given all the information that you needed to have before you purchased the home. And I think we're specifically looking at the agreement that was made initially and what was promised. I I feel like the town sort of was is was lied to. That, you know, something was promised, and then before it was even put on the market, they they knew this was an issue and you bought the house in good faith, not having any idea that that this was actually in the background. So you, in at least what I'm understanding is that you bought a house thinking that you had two full kitchens available to you. And now suddenly you're finding out that you really shouldn't have had that second one at all. Um, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but that's kind of what, obviously, I wasn't on this board when that original document was issued.
Not nobody was. But I think that's what he found out when he did his his search.
That's correct.
So that's what last two or three weeks, right?
Uh, I think it was around thirty days or so ago that the.
It's not unusual, the last thirty days. So that's when you found out. So Mr. Miller didn't tell you that either. Which he knew from the from two thousand and eight.
Right, which actually, to be quite honest, I had forgotten. I I really didn't know there was a deed restriction there, forgotten about it. I know there would be an issue with the kitchen. I remember that. Didn't remember signing the deed restriction. So that's why I'm coming to the table with the offer, removing the stove stove and making it into the wet bar as by the definitions that I received from my broker. And by definitions that Christie had just brought up by calling the assessor and whatnot. But I am willing to compromise, of course, as we just talked about, to take out maybe some upper cabinets, refrigerator if need be. At this point, you know, my house will be on the market, or hopefully I am still selling to Mr. Hines. Uh, but the bottom line for me is that I do need to sell this house because I do plan on purchasing another one.
That that's fine, but you know, if so, I just want to let Mr. Hines and Mr. Miller now and everybody on the board, if there're going to be some additional things that are going to be removed. Um, and you know, that I'm not saying that that's a bad idea. But there won't be a closing on December eighth, if that's going to happen. And just be prepared for that. And no amount of, and I'll put this on the record, no amount of phone calls from your title companies or realtors to Christie's desk or to my desk is going to change that. Okay? Because.
Don't forget the mayor and the administrator.
Yeah, yeah. So you some work is going to have to be done. So that's that's just the reality of it. And and getting a phone call, being told that the work was done is not going to be good enough.
Got to be inspected by the borough's building department.
Is it is it possible to suggest this, that Mr. Miller and Mr. Hines try to agree after hearing this discussion of what what somebody's selling and what somebody's buying? Because clearly there wasn't a meeting of the minds. Once they come to an agreement that they figure out what each one of them would accept as far as scaling back the kitchen, but then they return to the board with the ask to remove the deed restriction with this work that that would be planned. Does that sound like a reasonable path?
Could that be done, Mr. Kittredge?
It can be done, but you know, once again, you're not closing next week. And we would have to schedule another one of these.
That or it'd be December seventeenth, if we have time, Christie.
So I I'm sorry, can I can I just clap, Mr. Mr. Kittredge, can I can I just clarify your statement? Are you saying that even if with the current deed restriction in place, there's no way that closing can occur next week? Is that what you're saying?
No, what 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 I'm so if so, the app, the the applicant has come before the board, asked for the deed restriction to be removed based on what's being presented. If that were to occur, you would be, you know, that gets through, you know, then the deed restriction gets signed off on based on the documentation provided by the title company. Um, but if the board has expressed concerns understandably about, hey, all you did was take the stove out, uh, we, you know, and it's 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 and we're we're not accepting that this is just a wet bar. We want some more things removed. If you decide, if you agree to that and decide to do that, you know, that doesn't happen overnight. You're not so you're not going to be closing next week because we're not going to, we're not going to approve, authorize signing off on a deed restriction based on the fact you satisfied the prior condition of resolution adoption, right? We we can't because you haven't done the things that this board may ask you to do as a result of this meeting.
I do have one question. Could they close with the deed restriction in light? And come back later at another point?
Of course they can.
That that was my question. Would, and this would be up to the title company, would the title company be willing to allow closing take place with the deed restriction with the understanding that the two parties will come to terms on something that is acceptable to this board? And then that work would be completed and a deed restriction can be removed. But until then, the title company would have probably final say in it.
I think Mr. and Mrs. H, uh, Mr. Hines has the final say on it. He could close, you know, based on my experience, he could close next week, but I understand why he doesn't want to because he doesn't want to close with a deed restriction.
I I don't know that the title company will give him title insurance if they've requested the deed restriction be removed. And then you're buying a house without title insurance. That's that's a that's a risk.
Yeah, I I, oh, I I think that that would be an exception to the title policy, but you know what? That's here's the problem with situations like this. You and I are having a conversation, we're all having a conversations that have nothing to do with being on the Board of Adjustment.
Yeah, correct.
That's the problem. So.
So 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 what I will say to the board then and and to Mr. Miller is what I'd like to do is I, you know, I I think I want to just make sure that my attorney now is involved in with their attorneys to see if we can figure out some way to resolve this. So that's kind of what my point of view is right now.
I thought that would relate to the sale of the house. So I'm here today to figure out what the board wants me to do in order to make it saleable and to get a deed restriction lifted. So I'm going to ask the board, what would you like me to do to get the deed restriction lifted? I've offered this stove. We've talked about the upper cabinets. Would that suffice?
Opinion, guys. Mike?
I'm looking, I'm trying to pull the pictures again.
Christie, put the pictures up again, please. You can leave that one there because the stove is there. But like, to me, I would like to take one of the walls, one, the whole, the cabinets out and uh, just the whole cabinet line with this stove right to that wall, top and bottom. And just leave the under the window and the on my right side looking.
Okay.
That's that's my opinion.
And you want the all the uppers to go, Mr. Chairman?
Well, you could leave the uppers over the counter, but just refrigerator side, the whole thing, floor to ceiling, right to the right to the wall.
Yeah, I think I would go for that, too.
Okay. Then then you have true, then you have a true wet bar.
Yep. It looks like a wet bar. It looks like a kitchen now. It looks like a real wet bar.
But so.
Take them down, Christie.
So Harvey, as I as I'm looking at it, that would be looking at the refrigerator, going.
Oh, you want me to put it back up?
Going left to right.
Refrigerator?
This refrigerator.
Right.
All the way up.
Oh, keep going, Christie, keep going. Right to that, right to the, right to the wall.
Got it.
So the whole left side, as you're looking, as you're looking at it.
Right. Then you have a wet bar.
From from an aesthetics point of view, I I think just leaving that corner in there.
This piece.
Would suffice. I I think aesthetically, it would it would look a lot better than.
Yeah, that's a corner for cabinets, yeah.
A quarter, yeah, can can we just talk? Corner cabinet, can I please leave that one there? It only is for a few inches. It would make a cleaner uh, cutoff point.
Yeah, otherwise it would look like somebody came in with a chainsaw.
Okay, yeah. However, it looks like, but at least from the start, from the end of that cabinet back to the refrigerator out.
Okay.
Do do we know and 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 I I guess I'm I'm being a layman, maybe Mr. Cretelli knows better than I do. That stove probably runs on a two twenty, right?
Yes, it does.
Can we get that out of there? Because you get the two twenty out of there, you know, there's not going to be stove there again.
Right. Beside beside that, two twenty got to come out.
Yeah.
Mr. Miller, you heard what we had, what we suggested?
Yes.
Let me bring up even one more thing as I'm looking at it just from an aesthetic standpoint. If you're going to pull the stove out, you're going to pull the power out, you're going to make sure that doesn't happen. That little piece next to the stove, the granite, right now, the other side.
Yes.
Leave that there. So just, you've got a little functionality on both sides of this center thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be good because it'd be tough cutting the grain.
Here in here.
Yeah.
But the cabinet above that comes out.
Okay, understood. Yep.
This one here?
That's out.
Yep.
Plus its twenty line comes out.
What about the cabinet? It's over the sink.
That's okay. Yeah, Matt, that you need that for a wet bar to make it look nice.
All right. So you got an L.
Right.
So just to just to, for my own edification, we're getting rid of the 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 triple drawer cabinet next to the refrigerator. The refrigerator's gone. The stove is gone. The microwave is gone and the cabinets above everything on the left-hand side are gone.
Yes.
And even that corner cabinet on the left.
That's staying.
Dave said that it stays.
This this should stay.
All right.
That's stay, yeah.
Dave says it stays, it stays.
I'm just I'm just looking at it from an aesthetic standpoint and a functional standpoint as well.
I got you. That makes sense.
All right.
Now it's up to Miller, Mr. Miller, to make his arrangement with Mr. Hines, but we if we don't see that done, how can we vote on it, correct? Mr. Kittredge?
We cannot. We can't vote on it.
Until we see it done.
Yeah.
And then it's between Mr. Miller and Mr. Hines if they want to go with that route.
We can't sign off of it with the, I I would not advise signing off on a deed restriction when you're you're requiring additional things to be done. I mean.
Because of the fact that we can enforce it.
Well, once we sign off on the deed restriction.
They can do whatever they want.
Yeah.
Any comments, Mr. Miller, Mr. Hines?
I am going to say something. Yeah, so, um, yeah, we we will agree to the work. On 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 my end, we will agree to the work that we just talked about. Uh, Bob, where do you stand on this?
Uh, well, I mean, I I I think we have to, uh, you know, if we want to close, we've we've got to, we've got to agree to what the board is saying here. And then it's just a matter of, you know, how quickly it's going to be done and 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 how it's going to affect our closing for next week, you know, so.
Number two, also, if I remember, we we make an arrangement here. Does this have to be a moralized resolution as well, Mr. Kittredge?
Well, there's, I mean, we're not deciding anything.
No, but if we would, I'm just want to put the timeline in. That's the net, that's thirty days, correct? A resolution?
Well, so here's my understanding. In order for them to close, they need the deed restriction language to be removed. They have, the title company has provided Christie um, a copy of the, what they need to remove the deed restriction. So once we take action, that can be signed off on. Would would I do a resolution? I'll do a resolution, absolutely, because I think that's for the benefit ultimately of the board and also for Mr. Hines down the road, that there's a clear record of what happened here. But as I understand it, and this is the representation of his title company, that to to close, they just need that document that they provided. But Christie has, Christie has in fact.
But this, you can't give it until they see it in black and white, correct?
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying. I mean, so there's nothing.
This is the only document that they have asked for to be signed by the chairman and myself.
Yeah, but that's releasing it. We're not.
Correct.
Until it's done.
We're not doing that today.
Correct. So we cannot, that's what I'm saying, the title company needs this document, but you cannot sign this document, is what Mark is saying, until the work is done.
Right.
And they have to come back before the board and show us the work was done.
So that means there's another, it's another meeting with notice or no? Or can we let that go?
Yeah, I don't think, well, this is an administrative issue. I don't, as far, you know, as I read it, the they the applicant does not have to.
They didn't notice for this meeting either.
It's an administrative type of thing.
Okay.
But what we're required to do, or Christie's required to do, is give forty-eight hours' notice to whenever.
It on the agenda, we saw that.
Mark, can we, can we vote as a board now to empower Harvey to sign that as the chairman when he believes it's been completed to our satisfaction since he knows, just to speed it along or no?
It's a risk.
All right.
I was wondering if I could pose a suggestion.
Just one second, Mr. Kittredge, to Mike's answer.
Uh, so who's 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 supplying the documentation? Who's going to review all the documentation?
Right, so. Right, so.
I mean, I mean, I would think, if, if I'm a board member, you know, I, I, Harvey will ultimately be empowered as the chairman to sign off on it, but I would, if, if, if I'm uh, a member of this board, I think before I vote on it, I would wanna see that it was done.
That's why I asked that question, we need four votes or five votes?
My.
Positive.
I'm getting nods from some people.
Okay.
Right? Debbie, Ray, the.
Right, we want the board to hear it, okay.
Well, you wanna, I mean, if you're gonna vote on it, you wanna see it, I would.
Yeah.
Right, not voting blind, remember that rule, can't see, you don't do it. Yes, ma'am.
I was just wondering if I could add a suggestion, I don't know if this is gonna help or not, I'm just trying to help. Uh, but would it be helpful for the real estate lawyers to hold money in escrow until the work is done?
That has nothing to do with us.
Has nothing to do with the deed restriction.
I just thought maybe it would help ensure that the work gets done.
No, that's, that's another, that's a different situation.
Alright, that's.
Mr. Hines needs a clear deed, can't get.
Please, please, please understand what I'm about to say, and I don't, I don't, I, I wanna say it the right way, I'm not saying it to offend anybody, but think about it. The only people who care about whether this closes are the people in, in the two boxes here. Everybody else, doesn't matter to us whether it closes, right, that's nothing to do with us. So if the attorneys wanna hold escrow and do it that way, th- they can do that, I, that's got nothing to do with us. We wish you all the, the best, but that's not our job. Our job is to de- to deal with that resolution and whether it was complied with, and dealing with the removal or restriction, that's it. That's what we're concerned, that, that's our job. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
So, if you can work something out among the parties, that, that's between the parties.
We could probably re-hear this if it's done on the seventeenth, correct? Christine?
We have four matters scheduled, so if you think we can get through them, sure.
If this is done, if the work is done, I think the conversations have been had. I think we just have to go through the procedure.
Yeah, if it's a matter of the, we get a report that the work's been done, we need to get back on the agenda, throw, get them on, on the seventeenth, and we'll do that first.
We get you on the seventeenth, at that point, at that point, we'll sign it the next day, because can't sign it on, online.
Right.
I'll go to Borough and sign it. I mean, if.
So, I just, uh, it has nothing to do with this particular application, but on the seventeenth, I have a conflict that night, I must attend another meeting. I'll probably join at some point that evening, but I'll have somebody else.
That's all.
What's that?
We'll cut your payback.
Yeah, I know, because I haven't spent enough time in Bradley Beach lately.
Are you, are you, is your. Are we gonna have a lawyer in, in, when we start the meeting?
Yeah, yes, we'll have somebody there.
That's, that's all I question.
That's important.
So, I have to ask a question, so if the work is completed, um, you know, way prior to the seventeenth, um, and, I, I mean, it, it's just my guess here, but you're gonna want an inspector to come in and check to see if we physically did the work, correct?
Somebody, yes, they'll have the inspector, or a couple of board members will check and see if work has been done.
Okay, so I don't have to take any pictures or anything like that?
Oh, I would take pictures, yes.
I would do that for the record.
So then let me rephrase the question, am I making application again to the board?
No, we're gonna continue this.
Okay.
So, I, just to be clear, you have an application in, it'll be carried to our next meeting. So, so at that next meeting, I would have all your ducks in a row presented to the board.
Okay, plus the inspector will have his report? Or does he hand me a report once he comes in?
We don't need an inspector, we just need honest pictures.
Okay. Okay, that's fair.
Well, we'll ask the pictures honest.
Yeah.
Because that's, under testimony, so.
M- Mr. Miller, are you going to do the work yourself, or are you gonna have somebody do it?
I'm gonna do the work myself.
Okay, alright.
Does that include, um, the electric, electrical work, which?
I, I have an electrician that I bring in.
Okay.
Right, the reason I'm, the reason I'm asking the question, Mr. Miller, is if you're gonna have a professional go there, like the electrician.
Yeah.
Have a receipt for the work.
Okay.
Saying it's just further documentation that you did what the board asked, that, that's why I'm asking.
And, and make sure the receipts get to Christie's office before the meeting, okay?
Because, because just like we did today, it could be posted.
Yeah, it has to go on, it has to go on the website, because it is an official meeting.
Be on by month, that, that Monday, okay?
Alright.
You have to deal with Mr. Hines, that's you and him. Do we open this to the public or not, Mr. Kittredge? Mark?
Open it up to the public. Yes.
Anybody in the public wish to, wish to speak, show your face, and we'll look, we'll take comments.
I don't see any hands.
Anybody else on the board, or Mr. Hines, Mr. Miller, wanna say anything?
Um, no, I think I'm good.
Mr. Hines?
Thank you, thank you everyone for your time, thank you.
Alright, good luck, everybody.
Thank you. I make a motion that we carry, uh, this till the seventeen meeting with the provisions and restrictions that we discussed this meeting. Have him second to the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
I make a motion.
Coordinate for the seventeenth.
For the seventeenth.
Yep.
Thank you all.
I'll be in touch with them, okay, bye. Thank you.
Take care, everybody.
Bye-bye.